All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. It is November 10th. I will call to order the City of San Carlos City Council's successor agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority regular meeting. We do not have any Assembly Bill 2449 teleconference requests, so could you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any changes to the order of the agenda from staff this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anything from my colleagues?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull 8E from consent. I can do it now, I can do it then, whatever is easiest.
All right, so noted. Any other changes? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item five, presentations. My first presentation tonight is to present a proclamation recognizing Natalie W. upon winning second place in the 2025 Rethink Waste poster contest. Natalie, could you please join me right up here, please? Hi, Natalie, welcome. It's so nice to have you here tonight and congratulations. I'm going to go ahead and read our proclamation to you tonight, okay? And then if you would like, you can make a few comments afterwards, okay? Okay, so this is a proclamation congratulating Natalie W. for her second-place winner of Rethink Waste 2025 poster contest. Whereas Rethink Waste hosted its 12th annual poster contest, inviting all third grade through eighth grade students from throughout the Rethink Waste service area to create original artwork, encouraging young people to think creatively and about composting and overall environmental responsibility, while using art as a means to inspire positive change within their schools, homes, and communities. And whereas this year's contest theme, compost critters, inspired students to explore the fascinating world of composting and the many organisms that help break down organic materials into green in green compost bins, transforming food scraps and yard waste into valuable nutrients for the soil. And whereas a total of 37 creative and thoughtful poster submissions were received showcasing the artistic talent, imagination, and environmental awareness of students across San Mateo County. And whereas Rethink Waste celebrated the imagination and effort of all participants reviewing each poster for its originality, artistic expression, and connection to this year's theme, and recognizing students who used their art to share inspiring messages about caring for our planet. And whereas Natalie W., a sixth-grade student at Tara Linda Middle School, showcased her creativity and artistic talent, earning second place in the middle school category for her artwork titled "Be a Composter and Compost Your Food." And whereas Natalie W.'s work serves as an inspiring reminder of the power of young people to lead by example in promoting sustainability and environmental stewardship in their schools, homes, and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Sarah McDowell, Mayor of the City of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Natalie W. upon winning second place in Rethink Waste 2025 poster contest and encourage all members of the community to support creative environmental education and to take action toward a cleaner, greener, and more sustainable future. Presented this 10th day of November 2025, congratulations. And then Natalie, we have a very special guest here tonight is our Assembly Member Diane Pappin. And her office also made you a very special award recognition as well. So you get two tonight, which is really super special. So we're going to hold both up and take a quick picture, okay? And then you can talk.
I joined the project in a hope to show everyone else at my school and more people that they should also compost. It helps the world and it makes our schools and our everyday life better.
All right, great work, Natalie, thank you. That brings us to 5B, receive a state legislative update from Assembly Member Diane Pappin, so welcome.
Thank you. I don't know how I feel about following Natalie W. That was very profound and very few words. Don't lose that talent, is what I say. Well, I'm so delighted to be with the council tonight. How are all of you? I miss my council days, I'm not going to lie. When I first got to the legislature, I, you know, I would sit there and I would look at my colleagues and I always say this, I didn't even need to read their bios. I could have told you who served in local government and who do not. It was very apparent by how they approached projects and how they approached, you know, various issues. But anyway, I'm delighted to be with you here tonight. I was elected to the Assembly in December, November of 2022, and I took office early December. So I've been in the job for about three years now, coming up in December, and it has been absolutely amazing and I can't think of a better job. I thoroughly enjoy it and all its complexities. And it, we've got a long way to go, but it is thrilling to serve in the California Legislature, especially given the size of our state, the complexity of our issues, the power that it has. It gets me out of bed every day and it is just unbelievable. So I'm one of 80, and that means that I have to convince 79 other people, or a majority thereof, maybe two-thirds sometimes, to see it my way, or they have to convince me to see it their way. Just depends. So in any event, well, if we may, go to the next slide. I thought what I'd do is first talk about the budget, because as you all know, nothing happens without the God almighty dollar. So it seemed like that might be a good place to start. So the size of the California budget is $321 billion, which is kind of a bargain for 40 million people when you think about it. But this year, unfortunately, when I got to the legislature, times became very tight. And this year in particular, which would be the 23, 20, no, excuse me, where are we, 24, 25 budget cycle, we ended up with a shortfall of $12 billion, which there is very clever accounting that happens at the state level. And so between shifting some funds around, sometimes you can put things off in the future, some reserve drawdown, we didn't want to draw down too much, though, because we finally got some money in a ready-day fund and it didn't seem prudent to draw down on it right away. But we did draw down on some of the reserves and then we did some program adjustments, which meant probably programs got less money than they were anticipating. So with all of those sort of tricks of the trade, we ended up where we were able to at least not be at a deficit. We made up for the shortfall. Things aren't looking good going into the future, partly because of revenue declines and we have sustained operating deficits, so things cost too much, or the spending on them continues to get more and more expensive, but the money coming in certainly won't cover it as we go forward. And a lot of that has to do with structural things, the way our budgets work at the state. A lot of it relies upon income and income has income swings. And that's particularly true as it relates to IPOs and those sort of things. We are very dependent upon things happening, especially in our neck of the woods. And if we don't have those deals happening, there isn't a lot of tax revenue that's generated from it. The stock market has been volatile and I always want to point out that interest rates and the, how high interest rates are has really put the kibosh on a lot of things. I mean, I left the San Mateo City Council in 22 and there are still 3,000 units that haven't been built that we approved. So that gives you an idea of how difficult it is, especially when it comes to housing, to make things work. Then, you know, we have a lot of climate swings and the resiliency to those swings is becoming more and more expensive as is housing affordability. And then, of course, let's throw into the mix the federal government and tariffs ain't helping. We had a lot of Medicaid shortfalls, which has given us a lot of consternation in the state budget, a tremendous amount. And then, of course, immigration policies can certainly impact what labor looks like, too, in this state. So not exactly the best of all worlds. I wish I was here to present better news, but what it does mandate is some creativity at the state level. How do you get more for less? How do you make the dollars that come in be very accountable? And I can tell you that at least Democratic Caucus is focused on accountability. And I am one of the people in the caucus probably most focused on it. So we'll go to the next slide, please. I know that this entire council knows what the vehicle license fee is, but for those that might be in the audience or watching at home, I'll give you just a brief Reader's Digest version of it. In 2004, it was determined that the amount that you pay to register your vehicle would be reduced. And in return for that reduction, the state promised a backfill. And the state promised a backfill based upon a certain formula and anticipated that using that formula, the money for the backfill would come from a certain pot of money, which is the ERAF. And because of the way our county is situated and we have a lot of basic aid school districts, it is such that there is no money in that pot essentially for our vehicle license fee. So that means that we have to go to the general fund and ask for that money every year. So in 2023, my first year in the state legislature, we asked for that money hat in hand and we were given the entire amount of the shortfall, which in those days was a mere $32.8 million, which seemed like a lot of money to me at the time. Then came 2024 and it went up exponentially to $70 million. And again, went to the budget and said, we need this. And the governor's office always comes in, the Department of Finance, and says, we're not going to give you this money. We're like, yes, you are. So then it becomes a big part of the budget negotiations. And so oftentimes they'll say, well, you want that and you're not going to get this over there. So it is a lot of white knuckling, for certain. And then this year, the first time ever, the shortfall was $114 million. There is one other, one other county that is the same as our county, which is Alpine County, very small county. So of the vehicle license fee shortfall, which was $118 million, $114 million was San Mateo County's share. So that gives you an idea of what the nature of the impact is to this county alone. And it is needless to say, not palatable to the delegation from this county that it not get the full amount of its vehicle license fee, because those fees are used by the county for various health and human services. And of course, as you well know, they trickle to San Carlos as well. And so San Carlos, if we only get two-thirds, which we did this year, which was $76.5 million, then each city's share is reduced by one-third. And it's not anticipated to get better next year. It's looking like it might be about $162 million. By the way, this is on a two-year, you get two years after is when you get the money. And so it becomes incredibly, incredibly tricky. And as we know, for the City of San Carlos and every city in our county, it becomes very difficult to plan and to project when you have these unsteady projections for the vehicle license fee. And I'm sure you all know that the county is now suing the state to get that additional money. I don't know if your city might be a part of it. I know other cities are joining, because we all want to pay lawyers. I kid, with love, as a lawyer, I think I can say that. But in any event, it is, we shall see what happens to get not only that one-third, but what does that mean going forward in perpetuity? Is it that we no longer have to go with our handout in the budget process and beg for the money back? I mean, it was very harried negotiations this year. I remember where I was, it was nine o'clock at night. I was out of town at something and one of the budget chairs called me and said, this is what I think I can do. And I was like, that's only two-thirds, what do you mean? You know, so we negotiate these things wherever we are and it can be very tricky. I'll take the next slide, please. And so I just wanted to give you some understanding of what that meant for San Carlos's coffers. As you can see, '21, '22, it was $617,000. Again, because it's two years after it's allocated. That's why you have these kind of years that may not have lined up with the previous slide. It meant $1,003,000 to you in '22, '23, and then '23, '24 for that year, because we're dealing with it now. In '25, you will only get $1.453,000. And you make up about two-thirds of what the total backfill is that we get in the county. Next slide? All right, can we talk about some good stuff? Some things we might have accomplished. But I felt it was very important to start with numbers and start with dollars, because that's how you all can do your job. So I just thought I'd run through a few legislative efforts on my part and some of the other things that I had worked on. Next slide, please. In my time up there, so the first bill that was signed by the governor restricts the synthetic use of nitro-musk compounds, which are found in many everyday cosmetics that you buy at CVS and whatnot. And they're not good for you in any way, shape, or form. So Governor banned that outright. I had another bill that dealt with forever chemicals and menstrual products. That was, took me twice to get to the governor's desk to get that one signed, but this one he signed outright, so I was delighted by that. Next slide? This one, the governor also signed, which I'm delighted about. And this requires less from folks that use paratransit vehicles if they have a permanent disability. Now you only have to go once every five years and you can do it by a simple phone call. It's not like you have to go to the doctor again every year. If you're permanently disabled, your situation is not going to change. So it didn't seem particularly equitable to allow and to mandate that folks using these services be put through such rigors. And so anyway, we're delighted with that bill. It was so well-received, bipartisan support. It was one of those, and we had these witnesses that came to testify in committee that just talked about what they went through. And you talk about people that have adversity and are able to still do so much. And it was so impressive, you could have heard a pin drop in the hearings. And most of the time, things aren't like that. So it was really, for me personally, a very gratifying bill to do. Next slide, please. Okay, so I know, I know each of you might know about this bill. So this was a bill, because all cities have to do their regional housing needs assessment. And, well, you don't have to do your assessment. You get the assessment, then you have to do a housing element showing how you're going to comply with the assessment. And the housing elements have become expensive. And in my mind, they're living documents. These are not templates with Moses coming down from the mountain and everything's written in stone. They're living documents, they're, things are subject to change. It might be that you designate sites within which to build housing and it is such that maybe it'll never pencil that that gas station on the corner is going to be housing, because it's too expensive to remediate. But nonetheless, it is open land in San Carlos that very well may be an opportunity for housing. But again, cities don't build, so you're never going to know one way or the other. But you're doing your best to designate sites as to where we can add to our housing to meet our regional housing needs assessment. And I'm sure I don't have to tell your city staff how difficult it can be in dealing with housing and community development at the state level, who expects, well, first of all, there's a lot of turnover within the department and they come back and it becomes this dance. And so many cities haven't gotten their housing element approved, because they're dealing with these bureaucrats where there's turnover and one might have a different mandate than another. And it's become a very expensive proposition. Cities are paying millions in consultants and I think that money could be better used for perhaps housing. I don't know, but I kind of felt like it was bureaucrats run amok. So this bill was about that. And we attempted to deal with it by, A, allowing cities to start a bit earlier, so you can start that communication with HCD earlier. And then the second thing we required was that they gave you consistent and more precise feedback. If you, if HCD didn't feel you'd done something, I, this bill wanted them to give very specific guidance on what your housing element might not have and how to comply with that, rather than throwing it back or moving the ball or whatever else it might have been. So that we kept narrowing the field on what's required and then we can get it done. And I know you all know that, but I just want to make sure that the public was kind of aware of this. Anyway, got it out of both houses, bipartisan support, and the governor vetoed it. And it did not engage us, so we will continue the discussion. And I think I have some things I might work on to do some amendments that maybe, one of the things they were worried about was they would be drafting the housing element if they gave you very specific advice. Well, we can make it so that if the housing element includes this, 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 and this, then you're not actually writing it, you know what I mean? So we may be able to overcome that, but it was, there were no, those discussions did not happen prior to the veto. So I'm certainly willing to have them. And next slide, please. This one's been getting a lot of press. Data centers are growing. Data centers are growing because why? AI is growing. AI uses a lot of data centers, they use a lot of natural resources. There was a bill that dealt with how much energy they use. That died in committee on the Senate side. My bill got to the governor's desk and the veto message was, I'm worried it might inhibit the proliferation of data centers. And in my mind, you can't remake water. They use a lot of water, they're very thirsty. And this bill was just about, if you went to a city to get your business license, you would report your anticipated water use and then every year or two years thereafter, depending on how regularly one must renew their business license, they would have to report their actual use. And in my mind, those that are water providers would have a clear understanding of what they needed to do. And I like to say, let Texas run out of water, we don't need to do it that way. I just wanted to be prepared. There were no mandates in this bill, it was a simple reporting bill, no regulations whatsoever. I just want people, as Chair, I am Chair of the Water Parks and Wildlife Committee. And as Chair of Water, it was very important to me that localities have the opportunity to plan. And I think it's an opportunity really for California to lead. And the rest of the nation is going to have a lot of data centers, too. And as I said, we're not being able to make water. So let's, as they say, fail to plan, plan to fail. So I like to have a plan. All right, next slide, please. This bill dealt with geothermal. I made myself the self-anointed queen of geothermal, even though my district has nothing to do with geothermal. I am a true believer. And in order to meet our renewable mandates, we're going to have to have some geothermal. We have the largest geothermal field in the world up near Santa Rosa. And the beautiful thing about geothermal is what? It doesn't need wind and it doesn't need sun. It's what they call baseline energy and it can happen at any time, at any place. So this was a bill, I had a bill last year that the governor signed that dealt with allowing localities to review exploratory well applications. Because it turns out Calgem hadn't approved an exploratory well application in like 20 years. So nobody objected to having localities come in and be the reviewer of their applications. Then this one allowed, just for an exploratory well, you got a CQ exemption. It is such that even at the federal level, you can get what they call a NEPA, which is equivalent to CQ at the federal level. You can get a NEPA exemption for an exploratory well. So they're already doing it because they're not terribly invasive. It's just a way to do some of the exploratory work and get this fledgling industry to be much stronger. But anyway, for some reason, it was vetoed. And I love how my staff is put in the bottom, to be reintroduced. That's the old, stay tuned, there's more. Okay, next one. And I'll, I think I'm almost to the end. Yes, we got just a couple more. So I thought I'd talk just a little bit about cap and invest. I sat on the Select Committee for Cap and Invest. As Chair of Water, I was primarily involved in the water part of Cap and Invest. So just real quickly, what Cap and Invest does is the state, if you're a polluter, the state gives you certain allowances and then those allowances are worth something and you, if you continue to pollute, you can purchase them or you can, if you don't need all that you have, you can sell them to another polluter. You can either purchase them from the state or other polluters. And the thought is you have a declining cap over time such that polluters get less and less of them and it's to encourage them to be greener and greener. And if they're not, the allowances get more and more expensive. So that's kind of how it works. And then, of course, everybody wants to know what's happening with the money you raise from the allowances. And that's where the fun comes in. Because we really are promoting a lot of green technology and there's a lot of things that deal with water and clean water. So the invest part of it is the fun part. The cap part of it is difficult to tweak. Next slide and I'll kind of show you where the money gets spent. The first thing and the biggest thing is that it, the money gives you credit on your utility bills. And you will see that now. It never used to be demarked very well on your utility bill. Oh, now it'll tell you and you will see. You are getting this credit on your utility bill because of Cap and Invest. And then estimated greenhouse gas reduction. You can see all the things that it goes into. Rebates for zero emission vehicles, affordable housing, you name it, it runs the gambit. So we all love, I wish the money was more. I think it's been $10 billion over all the years of it. It's been, just so you know, Cap and Invest was re-upped. So we voted upon it to go to 2045, to give stability to the markets. It was originally going to go out in 2028 or 2030 and the markets were getting very unstable and the price of allowances were actually coming down. So the legislature had to look at it here in 2025 and extend it to 2045. And I think, yeah, maybe $4 billion a year. And then if you look at the life of it, it's, yeah, I'd like it to be more than $4 billion, let's just say that. Because that money goes fast. But in any event, it is a really, really neat thing. The State of Washington also does cap and invest. And, but they use their money in very different ways, like, because they're small enough, right? So like, they made it such that everybody under the age of 18 can take a free bus wherever they want, whenever they want. Well, that's great, but you can't implement that in California. That's, I mean, all the money would be gone, you know, we're just too big. But I am pleased. One of the things that we are going to be looking at is carbon extraction, which means there are certain companies that are actually looking at taking carbon out of the atmosphere. Because even if we stop polluting in the morning, there's still too much carbon in the atmosphere. So one of the, one of the companies that's developing this technology, that's right, is based in Brisbane in my district. So I'm terribly excited about Heirloom, plug for Heirloom. But in any event, it's really exciting stuff. Next slide. And so while we're on the climate, I just thought I'd talk about the climate bond, because I also was on the, I guess we call it the Study Committee for the Climate Bond and getting it on the ballot. And as you probably all know, it was on the ballot in November 2024 and it was a $10 billion bond. So for every $1 billion in bond obligations, it is $80 million in interest payments per year. So it's not an easy thing, because you really are saddling our children with these interest payments. But when you don't have enough in your general fund, But when you don't have enough in your general fund to take on the things that climate change demands, you're, and we're almost up against our bond ceiling. But we didn't really have a choice. And there was, you know, talk in our caucus about another housing bond. And then the governor was very into the education bond. And he was kind of like, well, if you can get the climate, if you get the education bond, I'll sort of let you get the climate bond. That was kind of how it went. And I was always into the climate bond. And I thought, this has got to happen. And as it turns out, the education bond kind of struggled. And it was too $10 million, $10 billion. And then the climate bond was like off the charts on its polling, passed unequivocally. And it was supposed to be in addition to whatever we had in the general budget, general fund for climate resilience. However, because the budget is declining, the governor basically used it as a bank. And he has gone to the climate bond to get things that we can't pay for in the general fund, which is a little disheartening to me because I really felt like the bond was supposed to be in addition to. But as I mentioned at the beginning, money gets moved around. And that was just one of the ways that money got moved around. But thank God, the climate bond did pass and we do have money. And because of Chair of Water, a lot of it goes actually, $4 billion of it goes to, has to go to water and it has to go to underserved communities. And one of the biggest fights there dealt with how do you define underserved community? Because being underserved in my county looks very different than it looks in Fresno County. And I could not have it be based on a statewide median income. I had to have it based upon an area median income so that we made sure we still got dollars back to my district. So it was, that was a nonstarter for me and my colleagues concurred. And so there you have it. Next slide. And there you have it. Oh, oh, I didn't, for some reason, I skipped over Prop 50. You all know about Prop 50 and its recent passage. I think for me, the biggest thing on Prop 50 is it's A, temporary, and B, we were not afraid to let maps go to the voters. And that's a very, as I always say, like, I'm Greek, my people invented democracy. This had to be democratic for me, and it certainly was. So I feel very strongly about it. I think important to note is that it will not affect any congressional district in San Mateo County. With that, there I am. And I very much have enjoyed my times of coming to San Carlos. I think in this day and age of social media and whatnot, we seem to be relatively siloed. And I very much believe that people are yearning for community. And I firmly believe that the city of San Carlos is firing on all cylinders when it comes to that feel of community. So you're doing something right. There we have it.
Thank you.
That's the end of my slideshow. I hope I didn't go on too long.
Thank you. That's, I, we loved, thank you so much for carving out time to come and talk to us tonight. It's so nice to hear an overview of your legislative efforts. And I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues if you can stay for a few minutes for questions.
Lay it on me.
All right. John Dugan asked tough questions, so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay, Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, no tough questions tonight. But thank you, Diane. Really appreciated the update. And in particular, it is great to see you're having fun and smiling up there. So, you know, not the easiest year. So if you're having fun up there this year, you know, can't wait to watch future years. And I appreciate all your initiatives here. And I like the ones that didn't quite get there or all to be reintroduced. So we, we look forward to seeing those continue to move forward. My question is just, I heard what you said about how cyclical our revenue streams are at the state level. And, you know, I think, you know, we're even feeling that now down here with the VLF, et cetera. And I'm just curious, when that pendulum swings back, do you think there'll be any momentum or thought to increase the rainy day fund and try to build a better buffer? Because, you know, we know it's going to keep going back and forth. And like you said, we got a plan for this sort of stuff.
Definitely. And that was created prior to my arriving in Sacramento. I happened to get there when times got hard. I wasn't there when times were good. But I have noticed that my colleagues that were there at the time are very proprietary about it. And for example, this governor won't be there forever. And they were very much like, you can use this much. You can't use this much because it might make you look good. They were not having any part of that. So they were very protective of it. And so I watched that leadership. And I, my feeling is, I think they're passing along that leadership about being prepared.
Great. Glad to hear it. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Assemblymember Pappin. I'll be formal with you tonight. But thanks for coming to and making time in San Carlos, both tonight and other times. Just want to thank you for all the work on VLF and, you know, just I encourage you to continue to fight. And I think for all these issues, the housing issue, I think for us is super important. We felt a lot of that with the, with the Rena numbers in our housing element in terms of having multiple people we're working with, with HCD, constantly somebody different, somebody else has a new opinion about what's, what they want us to change. So some consistency around that would be fantastic. I really appreciate the work on the data centers and knowing like, it's coming. And it's, it's coming really quickly. And the more we can get a handle on it, the better. And on the cap and invest, I appreciate, I will put my SBWMA hat on. And, you know, for us, the organics to energy, you know, looking at that and getting that some funding on that, which was super important and really, I think, really, you know, sort of a positive effort in terms of reducing greenhouse gases as well. So I just would say, thank you for everything and whatever we can do to help either, you know, at San Carlos, but also on the regional boards we sit on to help kind of push your agenda. I really appreciate all you do for our county and for us.
Thank you, Assemblymember, I mean, Councilmember Rack. I know that you were involved on the transit measure a bit and helping us get greater accountability there. And I would just like to publicly thank you because it was a tough road, but a very important one if you're going to raise sales taxes. So I do appreciate the, the esprit de corps on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Assemblymember Pappin. Thank you for all your work. And no questions at all. Just want to say thank you. And I know you're always upbeat and personable. And thanks for coming to our city and joining us today.
You all make it easy.
I too wanted to thank you.
And I do have one of these on my desk, just so you know. I love this thing.
Everybody loves those. On top of what everyone has said, I wanted to thank you for your work on parental leave and women's products. I think, thank you for looking out for women and families and children in your district. We really appreciate that, too. So you're covering a lot of ground, Diane, up in Sacramento, and we appreciate your hard work. We may have some public comments, so I'm going to open it up to public, oh, actually, before you leave the podium, I did want to ask you, and you and I had talked about this a little bit, too. I think we might have a little public comment. Cal water rates are really important here in San Carlos. And maybe you could just give an update from, from your perspective on that.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, you're preaching to the choir. When, when your mayor was kind enough to give me some of her time, I've been struggling with my own water bill. So I would like to say, I know that this community in particular has been very involved and very inquisitive about their water rates and what's happening with them. And my office has certainly been involved with Cal Water, with the Public Advocates Office, with your city as well. I wish I had more of an answer for you. We talked a bit about the quality of water used rather than just the quantity. And how do you differentiate between landscaping and maybe more residents in one spot? And I don't have an answer. And I wish I did. Not to mention that the rates themselves and the tiers, I mean, I'm very aware of the tiers in particular. So I have nothing to report at this moment in time. And I wish I did. I don't like not having some sort, as Chair of Water, I don't like not having some solution.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your office's attention to it. Your staff has been phenomenal in helping us out and advocating, and we appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll keep working on it.
Thank you, staff.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll just jump in and say thanks. Thanks for everything. I have nothing else to add to everyone else, but I do appreciate anyone that just comes and talks to us and just takes an update. Sometimes Sacramento seems very far away from San Carlos. So I appreciate you being here.
You're never far from my heart. I promise, Councilmember Lee, that you're always at the forefront of my mind, that's for sure. Okay.
Okay, so we'll open it up to public comment. If you can hang out for, just you can have a seat for a couple minutes. And we will open it up to public comment now. If you are joining us on Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand. We're taking public comment just on this item, the legislative update from Assemblymember Diane Pappin. If you want to comment on other issues, you will raise your hand later on in the meeting. So again, this is for public comment just on the Assemblymember's update. Raise your hand now if you're on Zoom. We will close the raised hand feature in just a moment, but we will take comments in the room first. And if you're here, you would fill out a speaker slip and give it to Crystal. And Crystal, do we have any commenters in the room this evening?
I don't have any slips, but if you, yep, we do have your hand. Please come on up.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor McDowell and Assemblymember Pappin. Thanks for coming to the meeting today and giving people some updates on what's going on. I'm sure you're aware that the water issue has been of quite a bit of concern to residents of San Carlos, where we experienced the highest rates in the Bay Area last year. And with Cal Water moving to try to get even higher rates through the CPUC, that's of great concern. There's no smart meter system here. There's a lot of issues with incorrect meter reads that people have experienced. And the biggest thing is the tiered system and the additional tiers that they've created that really penalize single-family homeowners, especially homeowners that have larger families. Even though they're using the same amount per person, they're getting much higher rates. And we're seeing people with $1,000 bills. And people talk about PG&E rates, but they're not paying attention to the water rates. So you sponsored a bill called Assembly 1827 that became law in January of this year. And I think you felt that this is aiding consumers. I've got news for you. It does not aid consumers. It was promoted by lobbyists from private utility companies and other city utilities. And they're trying to fight the lawsuits that have been filed against water utilities throughout California and that have been won by the plaintiffs about incorrect billing procedures. And so we did notice that you have received thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions from Cal Water and other water agencies. My question to you, moving forward, the next year, are you going to support constituents or are you going to continue to support utilities that don't want to see any lawsuits from overarching water bills? So we'd really like to see what's going on here.
Okay, Ken, thank you. That's two minutes. Thanks for your comments. Do we have any other in-person comments this evening on this item? Okay, why don't we, we typically take all the public comments first. So Crystal, do we have anyone with their hand raised on Zoom?
Yes, we do have two.
Okay. And why don't we go ahead and close the raised hand feature?
So first up, we'll have Judy, and you'll be followed by Fred. Judy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello there, this is Judy. Sorry, I have a, dealing with some dry air, it's screwing up my throat. But I would like to just speak to Assemblymember Pappin's comments and also recommend some things for her to take from the public back to the Assembly and see if she could create some good for us. Am I coming, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry about my voice. Excuse me. Judy Stryer. And I am calling about free speech primarily because we have a big issue right now with free speech in our state because different councils and boards are deciding to choose what opinions are allowed to be expressed and which are deemed hateful and cannot be expressed. Problem with that is that Supreme Court, Matal versus Tam, has declared in other cases as well, but especially Matal versus Tam, and that's relatively recent, that hate speech, if you might want to call something hateful, but it does not change the First Amendment protections for speech or the Brown Act protections for speech. So when people use vulgarity or obscenity, you can make, you could censor those and you could shut those calls down. But when people make comments against genocide or Jews, you may not --
That seems off-topic. I'm, I'm not sure that this is, pertains to the Assemblymember's presentation.
In front of your Assemblymember. You're going to cut my free speech in front of your Assemblymember? This is not off-topic. I'm asking for her to go back to the Assembly and to please consider rules against local jurisdictions cutting free speech due to political disagreements. Your political opinion of my speech, whether it's against Jews or against Chinese, is not of my concern. You cannot shut down my public comment. People are waking up to the problems with Jews, and you can't stop them from speaking about it. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the final comment. Next up is Fred. You should be able to unmute.
This is Fred. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. And I was going to talk specifically about vehicle taxation and, and registration fees, which I think is a big issue, especially for us here in San Mateo County. But I heard Judy speak and I agree with that, that it's the responsibility of the Assembly to really focus on protecting the rights of the citizens. And the First Amendment is the First Amendment. It is number one. So I would strongly urge the Assemblymember, and I really appreciate you for being here tonight, to take that back to the state and really focus on that. Because I think that, as, as I hear echoed by our state legislature a lot, whether I agree with it or not, that our, you know, quote unquote, rights are under attack by the federal government. I think that a good place to start would be with the First Amendment. That being said, the vehicle tax, I'm, I'm against all vehicle taxes, all registration fees. Most of it is all a, a plot to, it's anti, it's anti-property, which is why I think that most of our legislature, including the Democrats and the Republicans, are communists. They want us to all live in, in these goipods. They want to build these massive structures that, that, that just destroy our city.
Okay, your time is complete. Thank you for your public comment. All right. That concludes our public comment for the evening. And Assemblymember, I don't know if you have any closing comments, but I, we appreciate your time tonight and we look forward to continuing our working relationship going forward. So thanks for all your great work.
Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the next agenda item. Item six, council communications and announcements. These are announcements that are brief items from members of the city council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence they have received. Do any of my council colleagues have a communication or announcement this evening? Okay, I have a couple. I just wanted to thank the Parks and Rec Department. I attended the Life on Laurel event on Thursday night. There was a wonderful band of Carlemont students playing. It was a well-attended concert out in Harrington Park, and I wanted to thank them for that programming. I also wanted to thank our staff at the youth center for hosting the Fallmas Craft Fair over the weekend. It was a wonderful event. And our, I'm pleased to say our street celebrated our 14th annual block party on Sunday with the Centennial Block Party kit. And my neighbors just loved it. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Rack, his wife Allison Rack was part of our Centennial Planning Committee and worked really hard with lots of ideas on block parties. And that kit was part of her, her great suggestions. So wanted to thank everyone for their work on that. I don't see any other announcements, so we will move on to public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda, may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Again, we will start with public comments in the room and then move to online comments. If you're joining us here, you could fill out a speaker slip and give it to Crystal. Do you have any speaker slips this evening, Crystal?
No, I don't have any speak, oh, actually, yes, I'm sorry. We do, from Andrew Deesh. Sorry about that.
Okay, welcome. You have two minutes. You have two minutes.
Quick comment, I guess. I've been a resident for 30 years, raised four kids, I have a wife. Businesses around here have been a little less than businesslike lately, and I think that even if you look at Better Business Bureau grading, we're getting a lot of D-minuses in a lot of our places, like VW. I shouldn't go into specifics, but there's several that I've had problems with. I think if, since we're the city of good living, without, with exception of Menlo and Burlingame, we're one of the most affluent areas. So I think that we can actually raise taxes on these people, seriously, because it's a fairly affluent area. Anyways, I just think that we're having a lot, a lot more problems with businesses in the area. Thank you.
Thanks for that comment. Any, any online comment this evening, Crystal?
Yes. Stop that. We do have one hand up. Can we go ahead and cap that?
Yes, we will go ahead and cap.
So George, you should be able to unmute yourself. George, I see that you have unmuted yourself, but we cannot hear you.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm calling to talk about, because it's within the purview of your group, and you guys assign holidays for certain other groups and special days for different ethnicities and sexual preferences and months and so on. I would like to, as a European-American, ask for a white, non-Jew day, which will protect white people-
I don't think that's appropriate. That's inappropriate language, so you're going to have to be removed if you continue with that inappropriate, with that inappropriate language. You've now been warned.
Okay, excuse me. I would like you to please articulate the reason for violating my free speech. Give me the quote that you have a problem with here. I did not say anything that the Supreme Court would call worthy of violating my speech, and you continue to jump in. This is an exact example. You may not like that some other people-
Okay, you've now been provided a warning, so you're going to be removed from the meeting. All right, I apologize for that, everyone. And now we have finished public comments. We move, we will move to the consent calendar. I note that Councilmember Leighton polled item E. Any other items that my colleagues wish to poll? Okay, I will entertain a motion for the remaining items.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through I excluding E and Item J, Adopting Ordinance Number 1629, Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, Amending San Carlos Municipal Code Chapter 1504, Technical Building Codes, Adopting the 2025 Editions of the California Administrative Code, California Building Code Volumes 1 and 2, California Residential Code, California Electrical Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Energy Code, California Historical Code, California Existing Building Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, 1997 Uniform Security Code, the 2024 Edition of the International Property Maintenance Code, with amendments and modifications, and Safety Assessment Program placards. And adopting Ordinance Number 1630, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, Amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 1504, 110, Title 24, Part 9, California Fire Code, adopting the 2024 Edition of the International Fire Code and the 2025 California Fire Code, including all adopted standards. And Item K, adopting Ordinance Number 1631, an ordinance of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapters 8.11 to the San Carlos Municipal Code, banning the sale and distribution of nitrous oxide, also known as whipits, with limited exceptions.
All second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could you please call the roll, Crystal?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so Item E has been pulled by Councilmember Leighton. Would you like to talk about it?
I do. Thank you for pulling this. I think I had a couple of questions I had raised with staff earlier that I think was important to raise with the full council, but also get a little bit clarification on 8E. I know we're at the point where we've made some design choices, and now it's full steam ahead, but I just had a couple of questions. Maybe Rebecca, you can help me understand. Just budgetary-wise, I'm trying to figure out, we've broken this up into two projects, but I think the biggest one I'm trying to figure out is in analyzing what the costs are, and then I think the increase in costs that I'm noticing. Just, is there a savings that can be done, or where could potential savings lie if we bid these projects together?
So this actually is probably a Grace question.
Okay.
So I'm going to ask Grace to come up and respond.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Grace Lee, City Engineer. You asked about, your first part is the, the budget. 3.7 million was allocated for Phase 1A, and that cost estimate was based on design development stage, and it was only for construction only. It did not include construction management, design support during construction, outreach, or even escalation. So that number was back in 2024. And so, and this engineer's cost estimate is actually also in a cost estimate. We won't know what the actual number is until we actually bid it out. And your second part of it is-
Right now, we have it bid in two phases, Phase 1A and 1B. I'm just wondering, in terms of the bid process, is it usually, right now, we have a construction management cost, a PR cost, and a one-bid cost. So I'm wondering if, by having bidding it together, 1A and 1B, would that be a potential savings? Additionally, would you be redoing the same work or different work by rebidding out the construction management cost in two phases instead of having it in the one?
Normally, I would say there's cost and economy. In this case, there's a lot of uncertainties. The, the work is very different when you look at it. Phase 1A is contained. It's simpler. Phase 700 Block 1B is a lot more dynamic with lots of complexity. So is it, there going to be savings? Well, first of all, we've already split out the two plans, so there would be costs in combining the plans, again, costs and time implications, as well as, we're noticing that fluctuation in construction prices, right? So to the point where we're estimating every year is a 6% increase of construction prices. So if you wait maybe six months a year, that could factor in. So it's very, very hard to say what, or if there would be savings or not. It, it might be washed, it might be more. It's very hard to say.
I guess my last question is to you then, is what, we had originally discussed this about having kind of construction documents written for 1B by March, but you're indicating there's more to the analysis. So I'm just trying to get an actual timeline of what we think we're looking at here, and then what our decision process is for a variety of reasons, but that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so construction documents, we're working on 75% for 1B, and it is March-April timeframe. We'll have construction documents, although there'll be a big hole for the fountain piece. Also, in order to perform the construction, we also need write of entry from all the property owners along the block, which we real, we haven't reached, formally reached out to, so that'd be part of it. Depending on how that process goes, it really, and like I said, this, all the thought process that needs to go into for staging and phasing, it's not a contained parcel like Harrington, so there are a lot more thought needs to go into it in terms of how that construction happens. And we haven't gone that far yet, but we will. So that's, I guess that's to say, we're, we're, we're full speed ahead, 100% design in April-March timeframe, whether that is construction-ready. You would have the plans, but you still need to tick other boxes before that can actually really happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Would you like to introduce Item E, Neil?
Sorry, of the chair, we, we do have a hand up on Zoom.
Oh, sure, we can take public comment on this item. I did forget to take public comment on the rest of the consent calendar, too, so we can do both now. So this is just pertaining to the consent calendar for public comment. If you're joining us on Zoom, raise your hand now. We will be closing that momentarily. If you're joining us in person, we will take those comments first on the consent calendar. Anyone in person, Crystal?
I don't have any slips for in-person.
All right, and so why don't we go ahead and cap the raised hand feature, and we'll take that one public comment online?
Okay. So Dave, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the, the entire consent calendar, in a way. Am I able to speak about the consent calendar as a whole, as, as like a, as a topic, or do I have to speak about individual items?
Any of the items on the consent calendar you can speak on.
I thought this was, I, I raised my hand for the general public comment. Is this a time to speak about that, or?
No, that already passed. So if you don't have a comment on the public, on the consent calendar, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next commenter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. No other comments. All right, so we will move on. So now we need to make a motion for Item E.
I'm having to make the motion for Item E. I think I have some general concerns about it that I guess I'll just make now instead of if no one else has general concerns about it. I think we're, obviously, we're going forward with it in two different very ways that I think are expensive ways of doing it. And I think there's a lot of risk out there for us. I mean, I understand what is being said about 1B, but it sounds like there's a lot more questions to it. These projects, as much as they can be shovel-ready and go, our need to be, I think, a primary focus of ours to get them shovel-ready and get all the things necessary. I operate under the timeframe that March was when we would get design for the 1B, and then that could be something where I think we could combine it and do a savings. That doesn't seem like that's the case based on the responses I have tonight. So I'll move 8E because I understand the expedience of what we needed for, but that's my concern, just so you have it.
Thanks, Neil. Other comments?
If, Neil, if you have apprehension, would rather not be the mover of this, I'm happy to do that, if that would be better.
I mean, I have apprehensions, but I'm going to have apprehensions no matter what. I'm moving it because I think it's important of the speed, and I think that's what my understanding is of it. And I don't feel bad about moving it because of that importance, but I just want to make that clear, if that's why I pulled it, to discuss it.
So noted, thank you. I don't see any other comments, so I will entertain a motion.
I move 8E.
Yeah, I think you have to read the whole thing, unfortunately, Neil.
That's fine. I move 8E, adopt a resolution approving the downtown plan implementation, Phase 1A, Harrington Park Project, C2215, Plans and Specifications, Authorizing a Contract Amendment and Amendment of $300,000 to the WRT Inc. Agreement for Design Support During Construction and authorizing a call for bids.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
I do share some concerns with 1A, and I will continue to abstain.
Councilmember Leighton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Venkatesh?
Yes.
And Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, thank you. We will now move on to Item 9, A Study Session, Receive a Report on the Results of the September 2025 Community Survey Related to Funding for City Facilities and Services and Provide Feedback. And with us is Rebecca Mendenhall. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Rebecca Mendenhall, Administrative Services Director. So earlier this year, the City Council Infrastructure Financing Subcommittee, Councilmembers Adam Rack and Neil Leighton, directed staff to issue an RFP for a vendor team to perform ballot measure polling and outreach services to help fund the proposed enhancements to downtown. Four vendors responded, and based on the thoroughness of their submittal and the interview, the team of Team Civics and True North Research were selected. Tonight, Jeremy Hauser, partner with Team Civics, and Dr. Timothy McLarney, the President of True North Research, will be presenting the results of the survey that was completed
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council for having me. My name is Jeremy Hauser. I'm a founding partner with Team Civics. We are a political consulting firm that specializes in helping cities and other public agencies realize increased revenue through the ballot measure process. Tonight, you're going to be hearing from myself and Dr. Tim McLarney of True North Research about the results of recent polling conducted on the feasibility of some potential ballot measures to help fund some services here in San Carlos next year. And before I kick it to Tim to walk through the results of that survey, I just wanted to do a little bit of table setting about our overall goals with this research and this ballot measure planning process in general. So first, we were hired to help you all as a city identify the most viable option to fund your infrastructure needs here in the city, to fund the specifics of your downtown plan, and also look at possible opportunities for increases in general fund revenue. In the process of developing a plan to address those needs, we zeroed in on two different types of revenue measures that you could explore to address them. And those two types of measures are really the two that are, that are research-focused on, that you'll hear results about from Tim in a few minutes. The first of those is a bond measure, and the second of those is a sales tax. And I wanted to highlight a few key differences between those two types of measures to kind of give you a sense of what we're looking at as we go through these numbers. The first key difference, which I think is probably the most relevant for our discussion tonight, is the voter threshold needed for approval for each. A bond measure requires 2/3 of a yes vote in order to be approved, meaning that 2/3 of voters who cast a vote on the measure vote, must vote yes for it to be approved. A sales tax, on the other hand, if you are pursuing a general sales tax, only requires 50% plus one in order to pass. Second, there's a few key differences in terms of the uses of funds for these types of measures. A bond measure is a little bit more restrictive in how you can spend it. The funds from a bond can, are really limited only to capital improvements and infrastructure. They can't be used for personnel or other general fund uses, whereas a sales tax can fund infrastructure and your downtown plan, but can also be used to fill other parts of your budget as well. And then finally, the elections available to you are different depending on the type of measure you pursue. A bond measure, you could place in the ballot next year in either June or November, whereas a general sales tax, in order to qualify for that 50% threshold, would need to be on the ballot at the same time as your council elections, so we'd be looking at a measure in November of next year. So with that, I'm going to kick it to Tim to walk through some numbers, and then I'll come back up afterwards to talk about next steps.
All right, thank you, Jeremy, and good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tim McLarney, President, True North Research. Tonight's PowerPoint is going to cover the, the main findings of the survey results. There's a more detailed report for those who are interested. And as I go through this presentation, I welcome questions along the way or at the end, whichever is your preference, Mayor. Excuse me. So before we discuss the results, helpful to take a quick moment to review the purpose of the study as well as the methodology. In terms of the purpose, as a revenue measure feasibility study, we're really trying to do three things, shown there in the bullet. The first is understand if a revenue measure is feasible, in this case, a bond or a sales tax. What I mean by that is if you, as a council, were to move forward with a measure in 2026, does it have a reasonable chance of success? You know, sometimes we do this research, and we get to the end, we look at the data, and there's just really no clear path to get you from where you are today to where you need to be to have a viable measure on election day, and I'll be the first person to tell you that, if that's the case. When we do find feasibility, that second bullet kicks in gear, which is to understand how might you go about creating a measure that's consistent with the type of measure that your community is interested in supporting? There's lots of components to a revenue measure. Obviously, there's the price tag, what is this going to cost? How are you going to spend the money? What types of combinations of either capital improvements and/or service improvements are you going to fund? There's questions about timing, there's questions about accountability provisions that can be built into a measure. So all of these sort of important decisions that ultimately you, as a council, will need to address prior to placing a measure on the ballot, if that's your inclination, the survey can help guide. And then thirdly, it's an opportunity for us to understand the role that information plays in shaping your voters' opinions about this proposal. Next slide, please. So in terms of the methodology, we use the same methodology here that we always do when we're looking at potential revenue measures. we're looking at potential revenue measures. And the first question we always ask ourselves when we're sitting down to do one of these studies is what election are we considering this measure for? Different elections have different turnouts, and as you expand or shrink your turnout, you often get a somewhat different profile to the participating voters in that election. And so in this case, we're looking forward to that November 2026 election. It's about a year away from now. And so we identify voters who we call likely November voters based on their voting history, when they registered, what elections they've taken advantage of, other demographics. We identify voters as to whether they are or are not likely to actually cast ballots in this gubernatorial general election. Once we've identified our likely voters, we use a process called stratified and clustered random sampling. Again, the details of that, if you like, but suffice to say that what it ensures us is that at the end of this survey process, we have a sample of likely November voters that matches the universe of likely November voters in terms of the proportions by age, gender, partisanship, household party type, where they live within the city. Our sample proportions match that of the likely November universe, and that's one of the real keys to making sure that this type of research is reliable. Once we pulled our sample, we reached out using three different recruiting methods, email, text, and telephone. Everything's PIN-protected so that only those individuals that were randomly selected and invited to take the survey could do so. They can complete that survey one time only, they can't forward their email on to their 10 best friends and tell them how to take the survey, so we protect the integrity of our random sample. Folks had the opportunity to participate either by telephone or online, whichever was their preference. We had set out to do a total of 600 interviews, we wound up completing more, we almost 700. And with a random sample of 699 completed interviews, we have an overall margin of error of plus or minus 3.6% at the 95% confidence level. What that means is we can be 95% confident that the results will share for questions that were answered by all 699 respondents is within 3.6% of what we would have found had we spoken with all your likely November voters. We use what's called a split sample approach to testing a bond versus a sales tax in this survey. And so what that means is, once we get at our, we have our 700, roughly 700 total sample, half of those voters were assigned to a bond measure-related survey, so they didn't see the sales tax version, they saw the bond. The other half are presented with the sales tax measure, they did not see the bond side. That is the cleanest way to sort of compare these two different financial mechanisms side by side, and so you don't have any position order bias in terms of trying to present two types of measures to the same respondent. And so for those questions that are specific to either the sales tax or the bond, with the sample size of roughly 350 completes per version, you have a somewhat larger margin of error of plus or minus 5.2%. Okay, next slide. So we open up the survey with some warm-up questions, kind of just get people thinking about their community and thinking about local issues. The first of which is we ask folks to tell us overall how they'd rate the overall quality of life in the city of San Carlos, would they say it's excellent, good, fair, poor, or very poor? You see a lot of green on this pie chart, green is good. In fact, we have 93% of respondents who rated the quality of life in the city of San Carlos as either excellent or good. Just 6% said fair, less than 1% said poor or very poor. So clearly, San Carlos residents value living in the community. I will also say that when you see these types of results, what we tend to find is that residents who have a high opinion of the quality of life in their community also have a high opinion of the performance of their city in providing municipal services. They tend to be the most inclined to support revenue measures. They're sort of, they look at you as a good risk, you know, the rewarding of performance, a high-performing city with a willingness to support additional revenue measures. Next slide, please. So after that initial question about quality of life, we asked folks to tell us if they, if the city government could change one thing to make San Carlos a better place to live, what change would you like to see? This was asked in an open-ended manner, meaning we didn't show them the list of issues that you see here on the slide and ask them to pick one or two. We simply asked the question and let them tell us in their own words what changes they'd like to see. We went back and reviewed those verbatim responses and grouped them into the categories you see here. So one thing I will point out is if you look at the very top number, about 13% mentioned they weren't sure, couldn't think of anything that they think they'd like to have the city government change. And a little further down, you see about 6.3% say specifically no changes, like everything's fine, I don't want any changes. So about 1 out of 5 voters, when you kind of hand them a soapbox and say, stand up and tell us one thing we can do as a city government to make our community better, 1 out of 5 are sort of stuck for an answer. And that's great. Among the specific changes that were requested, the number one here was improving and maintaining infrastructure, 8%, obviously highly relevant to the measure that you're considering, followed by limited growth and development, 7%, providing affordable housing at about 7%. Next slide, please. So the last of the warm-up questions, we asked folks to tell us, generally speaking, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city of San Carlos is doing to provide municipal services? Because we're asking about the city's performance overall, we're not narrowing in on, say, streets and roads or public safety, this could be thought of as an overall performance rating for the city. You have 85% of residents say that they're satisfied with the city's overall performance compared to just 10% who are dissatisfied, and the rest unsure. That is, you know, I get to do this type of research all over the state for different cities, that is a very solid score. That is at sort of the top tier of what you can expect to receive in today's environment in terms of satisfaction with your performance of providing municipal services. So good job on that. Next slide, please. Okay, so after those warm-up questions, we get right down to business with what we call the initial ballot test. And the idea behind the initial ballot test is before we get any deeper into the interview, start talking in more detail about how the funds could be used, presenting arguments pro and con related to a proposal. We want to present to respondents a mock-up of what we think that 75-word ballot statement could look like if it was on the ballot and get their reaction. The initial ballot test is a very good gauge of where your voters are at on the natural with respect to this proposal, because they haven't heard anything beyond, or seen anything beyond the 75 words you see here. So this is the ballot language that we tested for a bond. As Jeremy noted at the outset, bonds are about capital improvements. This bond in particular, we structured to really focus on the downtown revitalization. And you could see that it was to authorize $60 million of bonds, levying a tax rate of about $20 per $100,000 assessed valuation. So that's the bond ballot language. On the next slide, we see the sales tax language. Quite different. Because it's a sales tax, it could fund infrastructure as well as services. And also, as a general sales tax, what it's really doing is backfilling the general fund. And so it's, these funds are earmarked for any one or two things. They are, they are going to, the funds are going to go into the general fund. And so the way we tend to characterize these measures are by talking about all the things that the money could be spent on that are also typical general fund expenditures. So that's the ballot language you see here for the sales tax. Note that it is for establishing a one-half cent sales tax for about $6 million annually with a sunset of 14 years. So those were the two ballot, the ballot test language that we tested, and on the next slide are the results. So on the left side, you see the bond, and on the right is the sales tax. So for the bond, we found 60% of respondents say that they would support this proposal. You've got 30% opposed and about 10% who were unsure. The sales tax receives a sort of stronger support out of the, out of the gates. We had 2/3, 67% of respondents say they would support the sales tax, 26% opposed with the remainder unsure. Now, because these measures have different thresholds for passage, you see kind of a tale of two measures here. On the bond side, at 60%, we are seven points below the 2/3 threshold that's required for passage of a bond. On the sales tax, however, on the right, we have 2/3 support, which is actually about 16 points north, right, 16 to 17 points north of the simple majority that's required for passage. So because the playing fields are so uneven for these measures, the bond is underwater by about seven points, whereas the sales tax is above water by about 17 points. Next slide, please. So naturally, support for a revenue measure can depend on the price tag. The higher that price tag is, all other things being equal, the less support you can expect. And for the bond measure in particular, voters tend to pay a lot of attention to that, that tax rate, like what is that tax rate that's going to apply to my property if it's, if it's passed? And so what we do here is we want to make it clear in this question that bonds mean taxes, right, just in case they somehow miss that out of the 75 words. And we tested three different possible tax rates that could be associated with the proposal. $20 per $100,000 assessed valuation, $14, and $7 to understand how, as you alter that tax rate, does it impact support for the bond? So a couple of things that stand out. Number one, in that 75-word ballot statement, the tax rate that was included in that was $20 per $100,000 assessed, and you saw that we got about 7, 60% support as a package. The moment we plucked that $20 tax rate out and set it aside and focused voters' attention on it, support wanes quite a bit. That's pretty common with bonds. We get 48% support at the $20 per $100,000 assessed valuation tax rate, ticks up a little bit at 14. The moment we get to a single-digit number, 7, it jumps up quite a bit. But even at the $7 per $100,000 assessed valuation tax rate, we check in about four points below that 2/3 threshold that's required for passage. We do know that this question in particular is, tends to be a somewhat conservative read on support for a bond measure. Why? Because on the one hand, you're focusing voters' attention on the price tag, kind of putting the blinders on them. Anytime you do that, it tends to have a bit of a chilling effect. The other reason is because when we talk about the tax implications of a bond in terms of a rate per $100,000 assessed valuation, not everybody knows what you're talking about, right? You have to understand what assessed valuation is, you have to have some reasonable estimate of what the AV is for your property. If you're a property owner, you got to be able to do math pretty quickly in the space of a poll to turn that into a meaningful number. Understandably, not everybody's good at that. And so what we know is that when you convey this question, voters, some voters will know you're talking about price tag, but they don't know what it adds up to, and they'll tend to hedge. And so we come about it a little differently on the next slide. I say, all right, let me put it another, another way. If you knew that this measure would cost the typical homeowner about $225 per year, would you vote yes or no? The $225 per year is the $20 per $100,000 assessed valuation tax rate multiplied times the median assessed value of a residential property in your community. So it's what that middle property owner would pay. And as you can see here, that when you go ahead and do the math for folks and you turn this into an easy-to-understand number of $255 per year, support jumps back up a bit for this proposal. We land at, at 54%. Again, still well short of the 2/3, though. Okay, next slide, please. So from there, we move on to what we call the Projects and Services section of the poll. And what we're trying to do here is two things. One, we're now going to start to educate this respondent more about what this measure could accomplish than they could possibly glean from that 75-word ballot statement, right? Only about half of those words were devoted to describing how the funds would be spent. Here, by unpacking these proposals into all these discrete projects and uses, voters are getting a much better idea about what the proposal would accomplish. The other reason we do this is we want to understand of all the ways you could spend the money, how do voters feel about each of those ways, and which of these are their priorities? So I've broken this into two tiers, just based on, if I tried to put it all on one slide, no one would be able to read it, it'd be too tiny font. So here is tier one. You can see everything on this list had at least 74% to 75% of respondents say that they would favor spending some of the money on that item. But as you look towards the top of the list, every item that is flagged sales tax here is because this is a, something that you can fund out of your sales tax, but because it's a service or some other element, it's not part of the, would be part of the bond measure. And you can see that all of the top projects here are associated with the sales tax measure, meaning they're, they tend to be services, right, as opposed to capital improvements. So top of the thing, keeping existing parks, recreation, community facilities safe, clean, and well-maintained. Here's one that is, can be funded either by a bond or, or a sales tax, which is fixing potholes and maintaining streets, maintaining quick responses, 911 emergencies, et cetera. So we saw that as a measure at that initial ballot test, the sales tax outperforms the bond. We also see that one of the, when you get to the discrete uses of how you could spend the funds for those respective measures, the sale tax items, the things that would be funded by a sale tax, tend to be among the more popular items. Next slide is, just shows the bottom tier. As you can see, these start to sort of wane off as you get, and these are more items, like discrete items that would be part of the, the bond measure. All right, next slide, please. So if you, as a council, choose to move forward with a measure in 2026, there's going to be an election cycle. And during that election cycle, there will be a lot of discussion and debate in the community about your proposal. You'll undoubtedly have some folks that will step up and advocate on behalf of this measure, talk to their friends and neighbors about why they should vote yes on this and why it's needed. You might also get opposition. People step up, raise their hands, say it's a terrible idea and we shouldn't be doing it. And here's why, right? For this survey to be a reliable gauge of the feasibility of a measure, we need to know not only where your voters on the natural, which was that initial ballot test, but what happens to their opinions about these proposals once they've been exposed to the kind of discussion and debate they're going to hear during the election cycle. So we do that by simulating that discussion in terms of positive and negative arguments in the poll. Shown here are the positive arguments that we test. The nature of the question is, you know, supporters of the measure say blank, you insert a positive argument, and do they think this is a very convincing, somewhat convincing, or not at all convincing reason to support the measure? As you can see here, a lot of the positive arguments get traction. At the top is, you know, a sales tax-specific argument about, you know, how by keeping this, the city safe, clean, and well-maintained, the measure helps protect the quality of life and, in our community and keeps San Carlos a special place to live. As we saw earlier, residents have a very high opinion of the quality of life in the community, and so, you know, we're connecting their concern about that and their, their value that they place on that in this positive argument to this measure. The second one, just gives some specifics in terms of the miles of streets that the city maintains, the miles of sewer pipes, the acres of parks and sports fields. I can promise you that the average resident doesn't realize that there are 87 miles of streets within the city of San Carlos, right? And so when you, you put out a few numbers like that, it kind of helps voters understand the magnitude of the infrastructure that you're taking care of. So at this point in the poll, voters have now heard more about these measures than they did at the initial ballot test. For the bond, we had a chance to talk in more detail about possible tax rates. That had a bit of a chilling effect on support for the bond. But we had a chance to come back, talk in more detail about positive, about how you'd spend the money in terms of services and capital improvements, as well as talk in detail about some of the positive arguments on behalf of this proposal. Voters have yet to hear the negatives. And so we circle back on the next slide to what we call the interim ballot test, where we present the same 75-word ballot statement, and we ask, okay, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And what you have here is an interesting pattern where support for the bond is trending downward. We're about six points lower at the interim ballot test in support for the bond than we were at the initial ballot test. That has everything to do with testing those specific tax rates and kind of focusing in on, you know, the discussion around the funds. On the right-hand side on the sales tax, we go up three points, and so we're now sitting at 70%. So we are a full 13 points below the threshold needed for success for the bond, and we are sitting at 20 points north of the threshold that is required for passage of a general tax. Next slide, please. And then we get to the negative arguments. The idea behind the negative arguments is I want to pressure-test voter support for these proposals by peppering them with a series of negative arguments, the kind of arguments that you would expect an opponent to level against these measures? Because I want to know that should you move forward with a measure, should you get opposition, should they be good at getting their message out, how might that ultimately impact voters' opinions about these proposals? So you can see here, we test a series of negative arguments, and some of these get traction. The very, the very top one is the sort of classic, now's a good time, right? Now's not a good time to raise taxes. Why? Well, residents and local businesses have been hit hard by inflation, high interest rates, cost of living increases, people are struggling, right? Now's not a good time. That's kind of a classic argument that you'll hear against a revenue measure. And the next one down sort of reminds them that this is not the only measure that's going to be on the ballot next year, right? Seems like everybody's coming after us for tax increases, and we just can't afford to keep doing this to ourselves. So all of these negative arguments were in the voice of an opponent, right? And we didn't pull any punches, because I'm, I want to know, you know, I want to sort of inflict maximum damage in terms of the negative arguments to see, you know, how much does that ultimately depreciate your yes vote? And the answer to that is on the next slide. So the negatives cool down a bit. So for the bond, we land at the final ballot test at 52%. So we're, we still have a majority of support, but we're, you know, we're quite a bit lower, 15 points lower than the 2/3 threshold that's required for a bond. On the sales tax side, we also cooled down a bit, but we land at 65%. So we're now, whereas the other one's 15 points below the threshold needed for passage... So we're now, whereas the other one's fifteen points below the threshold needed for passage, on the sales tax, we're fifteen points north of the threshold that's required for passage. Next slide, please. All right, so what does this all mean? I've got just a couple wrap-up slides on, on the polling part. So I mentioned at the outset that one of the overarching goals for this type of research is to answer that basic question of feasibility. If you as a council were to move forward with a measure in 2026, does it have a reasonable chance of success? The answer to that is a clear yes when it comes to that sales tax measure. It's also a clear no when it comes to the bond measure. So why the positive signs for the sales tax? Why do we think that that's feasible? The main issues are, when you look at that initial ballot test, right, that the support for the sales tax measure is well above that simple majority that's required for passage, right? We start out, right out of the gates with two-thirds support. When we looked at the projects and services that could be funded from these respective measures, note that the sales tax items all trickled to the top of the list, right? So the projects and services that the sales tax could fund were among the most popular. All the positive arguments that we tested that conveyed with respect to the, to the sales tax all resonated with voters, so we've got strong, solid, positive arguments. And most importantly, at each point in the survey where we circled back to a respondent, we said, all right, now that you've heard a bit more, where do you stand? And we presented that same seventy-five-word ballot state, sales tax. All of those ballot tests were well north of the simple majority required for passage, and that was even after testing a, a litany of opposition arguments. And so when you see that kind of pattern for a, a revenue measure, it indicates clearly that you, you have a path forward, you have a, a good chance of success, and you've got feasibility. So it's also the case, though, when you look at the, the poll numbers, that there are some challenges that we want to be mindful of, if you choose to move forward with the measure. One is, we did see some receptiveness to those potential opposition arguments, right? They cooled us down in terms of support, and so you want to keep that in mind. And also, you know, let's just keep in mind what our election cycles are looking like these days, right? Gone are the days where we had kind of calm, normal election cycles. We seem to have these hyper-partisan elections. There's just a lot of, of, you know, sort of, it's, it's tribal in, in many ways. And, you know, those types of, of elections sometimes are a little more challenging for revenue measures because everyone's, instead of sort of thinking about what's good for my community, people tend to get a little more just partisan in how they view things and how they behave. This is a measure that's about the community, it's not a partisan measure, but, and so, you know, we have to realize, though, that as you get closer to election day with all that hyper-partisan campaigning, it can have a, a, an effect on certain voters. They can, they can start to just behave and try and toe the party line instead of actually thinking about these types of, of community issues. And so that can be a little bit of a challenge. And we don't, you know, we know that there's probably going to be some other measures on the ballot in November that may, you know, create a little bit of competition here and there. And so I don't think, particularly on the sales tax side, I, I think you have a measure that can withstand this, right? But I just want to point it out as, you know, those are challenges. And of course, we also have some unknowns. You know, November of 2026 is a full year away at this point. You know, a lot can happen in terms of tariffs and inflation, impacts on the economy. You know, if the last few years have taught us anything, it's sort of to expect the next shoe to drop, whatever that is going to be. Again, I think you have a measure that can withstand these, these kind of headwinds if that happens. But, you know, we want to, we want to also, you know, be careful and thoughtful about the measure you put in front of voters. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, a, a couple of observations and recommendations, this is my last slide. The first is just, you know, as, as positive these numbers are for the sales tax, and they are quite positive, it's important to keep in mind that, you know, the poll like this is a snapshot in time. It is not a crystal ball looking forward to election day saying, you know, you're gonna get two-thirds on election day for your sales tax. A well-designed poll is gonna tell you where you are today, and we know that from that initial ballot test. It's gonna give us some understanding of how voters react to the types of information that they're likely encountered during the election cycle. But ultimately, what determines what happens with this measure on, you know, if it's on the ballot next year, isn't what poll says today, it's everything that happens from this point forward. And so it's important, it's sort of a reminder that we gotta make smart decisions about the measure you put in front of your voters so that it's consistent with the type of measure that they interested, they indicated they're interested in supporting. And you gotta put the work in in terms of communications. On the smart decision side, I think particularly with the, if it's a sales tax, you're gonna want to do a general sales tax that has to go on the November ballot. You don't have the option of doing that in June. And so November is, is definitely the date that you'd want to hit. Far as the tax rate goes, I think that half cent is what we tested and what you should stick with. What we tend to see is, by the way, there's, voters are just not rate-sensitive when it comes to sales taxes. So whether you put a quarter cent on, or a half cent, or a full cent, you just don't tend to get a lot of variation in support for a measure, unlike any other type of tax measure where voters can be really sensitive to its fluctuations in tax rate. Obviously, as a general sales tax, you're not earmarking funds for any particular purpose. But at the same time, when you look at the priorities from your residence perspective, they're the ones you see there in the fourth bullet, right? Maintaining and upgrading existing facilities, streets, parks, and infrastructure, as well as public safety and some traffic improvements. And then I know Jeremy will probably say more about this, but there's sort of two paths of communication moving forward from this point. On the city side, you're not allowed to advocate on behalf of a measure, right? You can, but you can and should make sure your voters understand kind of the, the way of the land, understand the, and have an awareness of the city's ongoing needs from a revenue perspective. And you can start to have conversations with the community that, that build consensus around a particular proposal. Then obviously, down the line after that, you'll have an independent campaign, not city-funded, privately funded, and that campaign would, you know, have the ability to advocate on behalf of this measure during the election cycle. So I, that's the end of my slides on the polling. Yeah, I don't know if we want to take questions on the polling now, or what's, wait until Jeremy, I think you have a few more.
I think maybe we can finish the presentation and then we'll have, open it up to questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. So just a few final slides, wanted to talk about next steps and overall process. This slide you see here are recommended milestones and benchmarks in the ballot measure planning process. In our experience, our clients that have been successful on the ballot in the past have executed on each of these four milestones in the lead-up to election day. You'll notice that there are three in blue, the first three steps. They're marked in blue because they can, and in our experience, should be funded by the city. That fourth step, the independent campaign to actually win your ballot measure election, cannot rely on any public resources, that must be entirely privately fundraised for and independently coordinated in order to get over the finish line. But in our experience, the executing on the first three steps in the lead-up to placing measure on the ballot can really be the difference between winning and losing for these measures. So tonight, we have completed our first phase of testing the feasibility of a measure. I think the results tonight are really clear, that a sales tax measure in the November election appears to be viable, and it's our recommendation that we would move into the next phases of this process. The next phase specifically would be vetting your measure with the community. As Tim and I have mentioned, you cannot advocate for the passage of a measure, but you can provide information to your voters and community about your funding needs and how a ballot measure might address those needs. We also recommend that you conduct stakeholder outreach, really to offer feedback to your community in term, in, in more of a one-on-one setting with, you know, local business, other elected officials, community groups, so that they have a chance to weigh in on your potential measure as well. And really, the goal of this vetting process is to, you know, refine our proposal and, and understand if the community is ready for you to place a measure on the ballot. If that vetting process goes well, we'd move into the third and final phase of the city-funded work, which would be actually building the measure itself. The deadline to qualify for the November ballot next year is August seventh. What that means is that we would have to bring an ordinance back to you as a council before that August seventh deadline with the final specifics of the measure, including the seventy-five-word ballot question, the tax rate, duration, and other specifics. And you'd have to vote to place it on the ballot in November. And you'll see that marked in the red line there, that would really be your final action and the city's final action before placing the measure on the ballot. So what does that look like over the next few months? As I've mentioned, we've completed our first phase, we've test, tested the measure feasibility, and we are recommending that you move forward into the next steps. We're not recommending that you vote tonight to place a measure on the ballot, but that you really continue to explore with a little bit more specificity a measure next year. So that would look like moving into the vetting phase at the end of this year through spring. As I mentioned, stakeholder engagement and outreach is really an important component of that phase. We also recommend broad-based communication. Oftentimes, we help our clients produce those communications, and they can take many different forms, fact sheets, PowerPoint presentations, frequently asked questions, content for your website, and then broad-based informational mail and digital ads to help get that, the word out and really solicit feedback as you're considering a measure. And then finally, that would leave late spring and early summer of next year to build your measure and make the final decision of whether or not to place something on the ballot. We would recommend that we do a shorter tracking poll to reconfirm feasibility, check back in with the voters before making a final decision with data that's a little bit closer to that November election. And then we really would be finalizing the, the specifics of the measure, including the structure, as well as the tax rate, duration, and the other specifics. And then again, that final point would be you all as a council voting to adopt an ordinance, and you'd have to do that by August seventh in order to qualify for the ballot next year. So I know that's a ton of information for both of us, but we are both happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. A great presentation by you both. Thank you for all of that detailed information. I'm wondering, would the subcommittee members like to weigh in at all about the process? Or would you like to just skip right to questions?
I think it's probably easier to get questions, and then we can fill in with the subcommittees kind of general opinions or thoughts on it, probably easiest.
Okay, perfect. I'll open it up to questions. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. That was very detailed, and I think you answered all those questions at every angle. So thank you for your due diligence. I did read somewhere that if, there's another, I think my colleague is gonna have the same questions, if there's another tax measure on the ballot, that the tax would do not as well. Can you speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, we, you know, with a consolidation of elections, it's pretty impossible to not be on the ballot with other measures. We see it really consistently, and I will promise you that if you're on the ballot next November, you will not be the only revenue measure that your voters are voting on. I think it's really a good reason to retest and, and repoll a measure closer to that decision, because we'll have a better sense of what's actually on the ballot. I know there's talk of a regional transit measure, there's a lot of steps that need to be completed before that measure makes it on the ballot. Community college district has been looking at a bond measure as well. Their school district, I believe, is looking at a measure potentially in June. There could be a lot of competition. In our experience, what you might lose in voter fatigue and tax fatigue, you gain in the demographics of being on a higher turnout election in a, in a November-type ballot. But we really ultimately will want to test that assumption and make sure that if you're on the ballot with two or three other measures, that, you know, yours is not the one that's being impacted first. I'd, I'd say another positive sign, too, from the messaging, one of your top messages was the fact that every penny of your measure would stay specifically in San Carlos. That argument is gonna be exclusively yours to make, and I think that is certainly a, a strong arrow in the quiver should we need to use it.
Thank you, that was helpful. And then my second question is, so the sales tax will bring about six million a year, correct? And the bond would be a one-time payment of about sixty million, correct? So if we're doing big projects, is it better to do the sales tax method versus the bond?
So, you know, in theory, a bond would be helpful in getting more revenue upfront, although I will say that many municipalities have bonded against sales tax revenue, because when you are issuing bonds, what you need to point to is a consistent source of revenue. When you put a bond measure on the ballot, that consistent source of revenue is property taxes. When you have a sales tax, you can, you can show that you're generating six million dollars annually for a set amount of time. So while a bond is the more obvious choice for, you know, more upfront costs, it's really not your only choice. And, you know, we've seen many municipalities be successful in, in issuing bonds against sales tax revenue if they need more money upfront.
Okay, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I really appreciate the work and overview and the thoughtfulness of all of this. I do just want to pause to reflect on the warm-up questions. Always love those getting asked and answered. So ninety-two percent of our residents, excellent or good quality of life here in the city, good living, that's, that's a great report. Twenty percent can't come up with anything they would want us to change, so we must be doing something right. And then eighty-five percent satisfied with the city's services. So, you know, great job, staff, that's not easy to do. And also, a strong report card to our city manager, Jeff Melpe, as he announces he'll be retiring early next year. So nice, nice report card for a long career here in San Carlos, Jeff. So my question, well, on, on the bond thing you just mentioned, so the sales tax stream of revenue, so a bond measure obviously is when you're asking for the parcel tax or, or, you know, that contribution. But once we have that stream of revenue, what is the approval process? Is it just a council action to seek a bond in, in, in the financial markets?
Yes, I believe so, and I'm veering a little bit out of my lane into the financial advisor realm, which I can pretend to know a lot about, but I don't. But I do believe it would be a simple council action that would allow you to do that. You wouldn't need a, a separate vote of the people.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's news to me and, and, you know, interesting because we are contemplating significant capital improvements, that's what prompted this effort. We have a downtown plan we want to execute on, we're going through a park and rec master plan and a possible rec center, aquatic center, street scape improvement plan. So, you know, we do have some big-ticket items we're lining up on, and, and we do feel confident, I believe, that our community will support that. However, maybe not to the sixty-six percent threshold, which is why it sounds like the recommendation we have is for the sales tax. My big question, though, is, you know, and I understand why we pulled the sales tax the way we did, because that's what you can do with a sales tax, and, you know, that's probably the best strategy to get it approved by emphasizing services and not mentioning the capex. But do we have any data after this exercise that would tell us what support would we have for a sales tax in our community if we were upfront with the fact that we're intending to probably seek a bond with it and, and launch into significant capex projects? Do we, do we have any, did, did this help us answer that question?
I'd love Tim to weigh in on this, but I'll start by saying, I do think that, if I can go back to it, the slide that showed the potential uses of funds, to me, is one of the most telling slides, because what it's basically showing us is the more specific we are in one use of funds, the less support we have, right? And if you switch from a general sales tax to even a, a special sales tax with a more, you know, finite list of uses of funds, you're losing a lot of the broad-based support that you are seeing for this measure, right? If you look at those top five uses of funds, there are a lot of different buckets in your general fund. And so, you know, while we didn't specifically test a more specific sales tax measure, that would be my conjecture, what we would see is that, you know, we'd probably get a solid high fifty, low sixty support, but not enough to be at the two-thirds level. I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that, Tim?
Yeah, I would say also, if you can go back to the initial ballot test for the sales tax, so it's probably slide four or something like that. I'm sorry, back up one. There you go. Nope, sorry.
You're good.
Forward and forward. Next one. There we go. Back. To the language itself.
There we go.
There you go. You can see in here that we do include the, you know, repairing aging infrastructure and revitalizing the downtown area in that second bullet, right? So it's mentioned in the seventy-five words. It's just, as a general sales tax, you're, because it's not earmarked for any one particular purpose, you kind of need to talk about the things that your general fund can support. And obviously, your general fund does a lot of, you know, public works and public safety, and that's what you see here on the slide. But we did mention revitalizing the downtown area, repairing aging infrastructure. So it's not like we were silent on that, it's just that you can't have a sales tax that's just about the downtown and be a general sales tax, right? The moment you earmark it only for that purpose, it becomes a special sales tax and you're operating at two-thirds. And although this measure gets two-thirds, kind of hovers around that, you know, you're, you're, you're making this hill, you have to climb a lot steeper to have a, a, a measure that would just be about the downtown. And I would echo what Jeremy, what we've seen in a lot of communities is, these general sales taxes are popular in part because they do cover a lot of things, right? sales taxes are popular in part because they do cover a lot of things, right? If you just made it about one of the items on here, whether that's streets and roads or just 911, public safety stuff, or just revitalizing the downtown, you are, by narrowing the scope of what you can fund with it, you will get a softer response to that.
Got it. That's helpful, and, you know, it's a, definitely a feature that we have more latitude in what we can use a sales tax with, so not going to quibble with that. But I, as we work through this process, and, you know, I haven't fully formed my thoughts here, this is, you know, very helpful to kick off our thinking, I will likely advocate, you know, a, you know, appropriate level of transparency that, yes, we can use it on our streets, sidewalks, et cetera, but if our intent really is to use it on major projects, you know, maybe at a minimum, that becomes the top bullet. So, you know, I would just challenge all of us to think through that. You know, I do think we need to be transparent. If we're going to ask our taxpayers for significant funding, we should be upfront with how we're intending to use it. The, my final question, the competing sales tax measures or, you know, if there's a regional transit measure, you know, it, it seems it wouldn't be helpful, but I'm just curious, do you guys ever see if it's, you know, we have a lot of happy people here in San Carlos. Do you see people making kind of the compromise where it's like, well, I'm going to vote no on that regional one, but then I'll vote yes for San Carlos? Can you get any lift off of that?
I will say that generally, to the extent that voters are choosing, which I will say, a lot of voters who don't choose, they vote their moral compass, and they're either all-in or they're all-out. But there are some who choose, and I would say generally, the rule of thumb would be the more local you are, the, the more likely you are to get support, right? Because of, again, that argument we saw earlier, if voters are going to be putting their tax dollars in the middle of the table, they're going to want to be seeing the improvements right around them, right? And so every voter is different, but generally, yes, I would say if a voter was choosing between a local measure and a regional measure, they would be slightly more likely to vote for the local one because they are also more likely to see the, the benefits of that in their everyday life.
But have you guys done any, you know, like, you know, looked at all the times it was local versus regional, and, you know, how did that affect? Is there any, is it just kind of your gut feel on this stuff, or has this been studied?
Yeah, I would say, go ahead, Tim.
No, I would say, no, we have, we have definitely looked at this in some polling where you're testing different combinations there. And Jeremy's right that, you know, the one of the things that voters always have concern of, as I vote to raise my taxes, are those tax dollars coming back here to my community? Or, you know, when you vote on the regional measures, there's always a little bit of concern that, okay, I'm going to pay taxes here, you know, in San Carlos or in San Mateo, and by the way, all those dollars are going to be, you know, wind up being spent in another area. You know, that tends to soften support for those regional measures.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands raised, but I have a couple of questions. I wanted to start by saying thank you for the key milestones and benchmarks. I think that's super helpful for us to kind of wrap our head around the timing, and that's a really clear chart, so I appreciate that. This might actually be questions for Rebecca. I, I'm wondering, does San, for the benefit of the public, now that we're having these kind of big conversations, does San Carlos have a sales tax that just comes to San Carlos?
We do not.
We do not, but several other cities in the county do.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
We're one of the few that don't.
We're one of the few that don't. Okay, that's really helpful. And then can you talk, I mean, I hear a lot from my neighbors, you know, our property taxes are so high, the city must be rolling in money. Can you talk a little bit about kind of the income streams that we do get from property tax and actually how, what low portion that is?
Yeah, we get about 11 cents or 11% of the property tax that comes in. The rest of it goes to various county agencies and the school districts and such, and that is much lower than our neighbors. And there's actually a graphic in the budget book that, that shows the depiction as to where all those monies go.
Yeah, great. I think that that's really helpful, and I'm, I'm sure we'll lean on kind of these facts about San Carlos as we do our outreach to the community, so thank you. And then I just wanted to kind of chime in on John's, you know, ideas about putting bond language in the sales tax language, and I totally understand where you're going with that. I worry a little bit about muddying the waters with talking about a bond and a sales tax argument, and so I, I would just caution us there. We can make those decisions maybe at a later date, too, with what we do with money. But anyway, that was just my feedback on that. Councilmember Rock, I see your hand raised.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just, two points. One, I just would reiterate, I think with the, I think it would be helpful to understand for me, like, what, with the fund, with whatever potential funding model, it looks like the sales tax is a better approach on, on, if we, if we were to move forward. Just to, you know, I'd love to get the projections for us on a revenue standpoint, understanding that, you know, there's things that were talked about earlier where, you know, VLF becomes sort of dicey over time and things, so, but we also have a number of, you know, larger projects, you know, hopefully will come online that will supplement our property tax and other things. And so I'm just cognizant of the, you know, the amount of taxation that we see coming. There's at least, you know, if you don't say, if we, without making any decision, there's probably three to four or five measures coming on the ballot next year, and I just worry about, you know, voter fatigue and overtaxation around that. So it's less of a question versus, you know, having those projections out, I think, would be super helpful as we sort of move through this process as well. And I also would just want to comment, I think, on, you know, the mayor's comments. And, I mean, to me, the, the idea of like, we're going to attach a bond to a sales tax, I think, is not, you know, what's in front of us. That's sort of, you know, maybe that's another discussion down the road, or maybe we don't do it, or we, there's lots of other taxes and things we could talk about. I mean, that, so I, I also wouldn't want to muddy the water because I think we're focusing on, we're looking at one or the other, and, and whether it's a go or no-go on one of those two items versus, you know, sort of creating a Christmas tree of things, so.
Through the chair, can I respond to the forecast? So as part of the, the two-year biennial budget, we do do a 10-year forecast, and for the next nine years, we are projecting or forecasting, dipping into our reserves. And that's, that's just with the status quo. So that's with no, that's not assuming the development kicks in, but it's also not assuming that we're adding any services, that we're maintaining any new bathrooms downtown or anything like that. So that's what the sales tax would also help, because when you look at a bond, the bond's only for the capital. It doesn't include the ongoing maintenance costs. So for every, every new park we build and things like that, we do need to consider the maintenance costs. And then as far as the unfunded project list, the unfunded project list was put together back in May, and it does not include all those new things that came up during the parks' master plan process. So that $364 million is actually much higher now. So it didn't include the community center or the aquatic park.
Okay, thank you. Much higher now. Councilmember Leighton and then Councilmember Dugan.
Jeremy, can you talk, we talked about it in the subcommittee meeting a little bit, about the sales tax cap, how it relates to the county and how it relates to our city?
Yes. So the cap in San Mateo County is 10.25%, so 10 and 1/4. You all are currently at 9 and 3/8ths, which means you have 7/8ths of a cent left under that cap. The only reason that San Mateo County is at the 10 and 1/4 rate is because you've sought authorization twice to the legislature, I believe it was then Assemblymember Mullen before Measures K in 2016 and Measure W in 2018, to increase the cap. In general, you basically get two percentage points above the 7.25 to the state, so you've got 7/8ths left, right? And if you all don't, you know, approve a measure to take up some of that, that sales tax cap, another agency that overlaps with you could in the future. I will say that the regional measure from authorized by SP 63 is written in a way that it does not impact your local sales tax cap. So if that passed, that half cent that is being contemplated would not be counted against your 10 and 1/4.
And just to make sure I'm, that's assuming, that's assuming that passes, right? But that doesn't mean between now and 2026 that other agencies may come forward, and then that would kind of usurp some of the cap requiring legislative action as a county, right? Can't do it individually as a city?
Correct.
Okay.
Good question. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just to clarify, I, you know, the idea of a bond's interesting in the future, but yeah, clearly not suggesting we attach any kind of thoughts of a bond to the sales tax. But I do feel that if, for example, in, in the voter guide, if repairing aging infrastructure, revitalizing the downtown area is what we're mostly thinking about, then that should probably be the top bullet point is, is really my input on that, just to be as transparent as we can be. And then a quick follow-up, appreciate that detail on the point 78. Should we be considering a 3/4 cent sales tax here? It sounded like this was, you know, voters aren't as concerned on, on percentages as, as, you know, they're more concerned whether they approve or not, not so much whether it's 3/4s or 1/2 cent. And, you know, what Rebecca just shared about the totals we may be looking at, should we at least consider that?
It's certainly something that you could look at in the future, in future polling. We, we opted for the 1/2 cent because, you know, before you put these polls in the field, you're having your best guess as to what the number's going to come back. And so we were asking for a number that we thought was reasonable within means. Doesn't mean that you couldn't, you know, explore it in the future. In our experience, you want to have a good rationale for how that delta in increased revenue is going to be beneficial to, you know, end outcomes and goals here in the city. So I wouldn't take it off the table, just because we didn't test it in this, this first poll.
Right, but I mean, what delta are you talking about in the sense, I mean, this was just a survey, right? I mean, we're still free to go out, 3/4s, we haven't been talking about a 1/2 cent, is that?
No, yeah, you are, you are free to go out with anything up to 7/8ths unless the legislature was to seek authorization to increase the cap, which I don't see happening before next November, but you could place a measure on the ballot at anything up to 7/8ths.
And how consistent do you think the result would be with this survey? I know we didn't test that, but in your experience, is it not going to be a, a big swing?
Tim, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I'll jump in on that. As I mentioned earlier, we tend not to see a lot of rate sensitivity on sales taxes, so whether it was a half a penny or 1/2 cent or a full cent, we rarely do full cent measures for cities. We tend to see deltas of, say, 2, 3, 4% in support, right? So if you, you know, if we took that lesson that we've seen in a lot of their polling and applied it here, it would suggest that, yes, you could raise the rate up to the full 7/8ths, and, you know, you, you may shave a few points off the top of your, your results that you're seeing here, which you have the, clearly the buffer to be able to do that if that was your inclination. I think Jeremy's point is right, though, that before you, as a, as a council, would officially pull the trigger on that, there is a planned tracking poll to give you up-to-date information, you know, say, six, eight months from now, and that's where you'd want to sort of test that, just to make sure, right?
Got it. Well, it sounds like maybe we should, at least in the next poll, provide both options as something to, to query. And, and I don't, I don't, sitting here today, have an opinion between the two, but, you know, hearing what Rebecca said, and if it is true, another agency could come and end up with that. If we don't, that would be an argument for the, you know, 3/4s or the full 7/8ths. So just making that observation. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few comments. I was actually impressed that 700 people spent almost 17 minutes of your time, and you got, had that many respondents. And also, 63% of the respondents have lived in San Carlos for more than 15 years, and I thought that was a good testament to this survey, too. And then I'm also a little surprised that infrastructure keeps coming up. And since Stephen's here, maybe you can talk about how much money we put into infrastructure.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and to the councilmembers, Stephen Machida, Public Affairs Director. I think I had stated in the past, you know, certainly with the CIP that the council had given us, the Public Works Department, it's probably one of the record amount of money that the council has established or provided to us, in particular, as it relates to streets, sewer, and storm drain. And it's, you know, it's certainly one of the records that's, as I think I should have mentioned during the budget presentation, this is probably one of the largest budgets I have, you know, actually been a part of in my entire career, and this is spanning over 40-plus years. So, you know, and as I mentioned, I really wanted to thank you, Council, for actually providing that. So you're working over $82, $83 million in, in CIP projects, and so that's a really large, you know, budget for certainly a city of our size.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Leighton?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I don't know if we've moved into the comment section or where we're at.
I'd like to take public comment, and then we can make comments if that's okay. I'll, we'll move into public comment now, and then if there's more questions, we can certainly take them or take comments after the public comment. So if you're joining us on Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand. We will cap the raise hand feature in just a moment. And if you're joining us here in person, now is the time to pick up a card. Crystal, do you have any speaker slips?
I don't have any speaker slips at the moment, but if you would like, you can approach the podium at this time.
Okay. Hey, seeing none.
And there are currently no hands on Zoom.
All right. I mean, we'll close the public comment feature then, and, yeah, now we'll open it up to additional questions or comments. So Councilmember Leighton, if you'd like to start off?
Sure. Thanks, Jeremy. Thanks, Tim, for this, and thanks for the presentation you gave to the subcommittee beforehand to kind of preface for all of this. I guess the thing I'd like to point out where we're getting into, and what I think we got to make sure we give staff the most direction to going forward tonight. Obviously, the bonds are difficult and don't pull the way it is, so let's just say, for talking purposes, it seems like the sales tax is more viable for our current environment. So talking about that, I mean, obviously, I think the biggest things we need to make sure people understand, if they understand the budget. San Carlos has always been incredibly generous to every municipality, from school districts to the city, when they, we can answer the why. I mean, just the numbers tonight are the things we've discussed, right? If the vehicle license fund, that could be 1.453 million that could be lost to the city of San Carlos if that goes away overnight. That's what Assemblymember Papin said. If, we've discussed downtown, just the 1A project has gone from 3.7 to 5.9, essentially just in escalation costs and more soft costs. We still have other additions to get to 1B, to get to the projects we want, and those aren't even, those are infrastructure things I talk about. Those aren't even trying to fund things like the fund projects, like a pool, a community center, any more kind of parks and rec situations. So, I mean, what I would hope we would take from tonight is the very importance of the things that we have, even though we have given 81 to 82 million dollars for streets, I mean, that's almost like a makeup cost, right, from so many years of we didn't do anything, and now we have to make up for that. And what we should take from that is how do you continue to do that over time to maintain what people want, because the streets programs and the sidewalks programs are incredibly popular for not having, for things that I think people think are automatic or should always be done. So I would hope we would focus tonight on guiding staff to send out information on how the city is funded, the needs we have financially with the CIP, you know, what's unfunded, what currently is going on. If 6% escalation is an estimate, that means it probably comes back at 9 or 12% for just things like downtown. Every year, we don't get something done, and I think it's important that people know that. And then once people know that, and our funding sources, either you bond, you sales tax, that's, I think, the most important thing. Once that information goes out, I think that will give us a better barometer if this thing is actually doable, because fortunately, from our city perspective, is that we're really good at sending out communications and getting feedback back from the community. So that would be my guidance for staff tonight, to really send out information to make sure people understand how the city is funded on that 11% of, or the 11 cents per dollar of the property tax, and what that actually goes toward and what our actual needs are. And then, you know, a big part we talked about in the subcommittee was the information of, part of the reason we brought this forward wasn't necessarily for one project, but was because we are anticipating what is going to happen over the next couple of years with funding. Obviously, the federal government has showed that federal funding is shrinking and going away. Now, the state is battling with that budget, which is eventually going to trickle down to us. That doesn't happen in a year before we really feel the pain. That happens in 18 months to 24 months. So, you know, part of that is to get out in front of that and to make sure that we, as a city, can maintain the services we have on top of continuing to grow for more. So I just think that messaging is incredibly important for us going forward of what we communicate to people, and then once that messaging goes out, no one has any problems emailing us, so I'm sure we'll find out what those thoughts are on it. those thoughts are on it. But I think that's a very important step for us to guide staff on as we go through stage two of the vetting process, and how you talk about that to your external stakeholders as well during meetings, community events, and things like that.
Great, thank you. Very well said. Any other comments? I'll chime in. Neil's a hard act to follow. I agree with everything Neil said. It was so well spoken. I too support moving forward with the sales tax. I think it's time to go public, start that education campaign. I think I agree with Neil's suggestions. I'd also like to, you know, as part of that education campaign, talk about how we're one of the only cities that doesn't have a local sales tax, and it's time that we catch up. And if other communities are doing this, you know, there's no reason why San Carlos shouldn't have this on the books. And we, our community wants a lot of things. We keep hearing, you know, a lot of big projects ahead of us, and we do need to prepare and think ahead. So to support all of these community requests, I think we need to think about new funding streams. And this seems like, I'm delighted to see that it's been polling well. So thank you for all of that information. And so I'm ready to move forward as well. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I too support the sales tax. Glad we got such good feedback from our community. I appreciate the mayor's thoughts on the messaging. It'll be good to start communicating. And I would just add that the notion that another agency could come and do this instead of us and spend it on things outside of San Carlos ought to be in our messaging, because that's why, one of the good reasons I'll vote for this. And I do think when we go out on the next poll, we really should look at if 3/4 or 1/2 cent is more appropriate, because of that opportunity for us to never, you know, for another agency to grab on to that. This is our chance to preserve it here in town. And, but to inform that, I think we really do need to make sure we get the real numbers we're talking about in one place and really just size, you know, where does the 1/2 cent get us? What does the 3/4 cent get us against this menu of things that we're considering investing in? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Any other final comments? Did you guys get all the information you need from us tonight? Clear direction? Okay. Great. Thank you. So now we will move on to item 10, agenda setting. These are items discussed that could be considered by council for placing on a future agenda. I see Councilmember Leighton, did you have an item?
I did. Sorry, I had difficulty with the button. I do, now that our council has been informed of a date of the great Jeff Malpe leaving the city, I was hoping we could agendize just, I know there's been a subcommittee for it, either a subcommittee update or just a process for our city manager timeline and hiring process. And we have a consultant. It'd just be good now that those questions are going to start coming to us to have some more information we have. And I know it has to be a public item, so.
Well, Neil, you're so timely, because the subcommittee just discussed this today, and Rebecca's going to give an update.
We did just discuss this. At the next council meeting, we'll have a closed session at 6 o'clock to talk about the next process and the timeline.
Great. Does any of it have to be, only just I know is from just my past experience, does any of it have to be public? That's, and that can be decided at a later time, but just be discussed at a later time is my only concern. But I don't need an answer to that right now. I just wanted to bring it up.
I can, I can give you a report later, but not, not tonight.
All right. Any other agenda setting items? Okay, now that we are at adjournment, I want to adjourn in honor of all of our military veterans. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. I want to thank Councilmember John Dugan for his service, and all of our community members who have served in the military. And I hope we will all take a moment to say thank you tomorrow as part of Veterans Day. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.